According to the recent whistle from me, you're supposed to stop. So you'll have to yield, say you called a whistle. Okay? We're gonna get going, we may have, you know, we've got, getting out of here at seven o'clock for the city council meeting, I know we've got some stuff the manager wants to talk about. You want to begin?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, tonight we have a number of items on the agenda. The main thing we have, on the section four of your agenda, we have several items that will come up for discussion on June 12th. But because they had at least one opposition vote, the process that we have in the planning commission, the process that we had to bring those to you first, so that you can get an update prior to having to act on them on the 12th. So Frank Duke has four separate discussions tonight, but they are very short, but again, it's to basically bring council to speed. Prior to that-
Can I ask you, what is driving the June 12th day?
It's just the next meeting, the next voting meeting.
The next voting meeting?
Yes.
Because I know there's some, I don't know anything about character districts, other than it's a nice stag or something, I mean, I do know that it's probably gonna interrupt, it's gonna have a profound impact on some properties, and so we ought to all have a really good understanding, instead of just a shoot tonight, then come back on the 12th. I know they've been studying for months and months, you know, maybe we can bring it back later in the month or something like that, after the council, it feels like it really knows what it's talking about. There's a conversation going on down at this end of the table, you know, maybe even within city hall here, we're not discussing all of the implications. Okay? We just want to make sure we get it right, so.
The Neighborhood League has also asked that it be delayed in June, since Frank is gonna come speak to him about it after the 12th. So they had asked that the vote would be delayed.
So let's not advertise that one.
Okay, don't do that, Frank. Okay. Prior to that, we'll have a brief, I believe it's a two-slide presentation on the Governor's School for the Arts, that's the ordinance you'll have tonight, and then after that, we'll go start off with council interests, but to end the agenda for tonight, we have Jim Riddick, who's gonna make a presentation related to hurricane preparedness. We did this last May, and I think it's going to be this ongoing discussion that we had prior to the hurricane season. Before we turn things over to Jim, I believe you received my memo on Friday, that we do have the first work session in June set aside for discussion for the waterside. And tonight, just to be prepared for that June 5th discussion, if there are any questions that you want staff to take down, that we could share with the consultant or with the courtage company prior to that June 5th work session, we've set aside some time tonight just to take in those questions. So mayor and council, that is what we have in terms of an agenda tonight, and if there's no questions, I'll turn it back over to Chief of Council Interest.
Just a few things, I could, I'm just gonna ask this on a, maybe considered a budget issue, I just don't know if it is or isn't. We had talked about purchasing that shore patrol station, but I hadn't gotten, I thought-
Shore patrol, they were the sheriff's office.
Right, but I, was, did we hear back that they weren't interested in selling that?
No, they aren't interested.
They're interested in selling, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I thought, I may have missed that. Today, we were at this governor's school kickoff for the Capitol campaign, and the mayor spoke, Terry was there, Barclay was there, I was there, Angela, I think, was coming, but it was, it was quite an event, and it really showed tremendous talent that we have in the area, not just the city of Norfolk. But it, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Mayor, if it's possible that we go back, I had mentioned something about an arts district, and calling a definitive area an arts district, and the issue of whether we added something to tickets, whether it was a nickel, a dime, whatever it was, used for, at those certain venues, used for advertising, the arts district. If we could somehow go back to that memorandum that was written at the time Regina was the manager, and we, she ended up, we got some type of memo back that was discussing more what they have in Williamsburg, that wasn't the idea, but it really would be nice to have a definitive area where we could say, this is our established arts district, we are, as we discussed today, and it was mentioned, the cultural hub of not just Virginia, but it appears, if you look up and down the East Coast, it appears to be quite a cultural hub. So we need to really step that up, we could look at that, I'd just appreciate if you find that old memo, and if we could rediscuss the formal establishment of an arts district, I'd appreciate it.
And when Andy brought it up, I remember there was a discussion, because there's some other cities that have done similarly, and it really adds to the vibrancy of the arts district, and I would really like to see us pursue this, because this just adds more energy to that whole scene.
This really was terrific today, I mean, keeping the governor's school here and doing what we're doing.
You know, we're rehabbing our money with the revenue that's coming in from these, the leases from the other cities, for a building that we have that is in terrible disrepair, in fact, a couple of three floors are actually, have been condemned, so we're getting a brand-new building, you know, in which all of this new activity's gonna occur in downtown, and the kids are just-
They're phenomenal, I mean, those really are wonderful kids, and also, I think what I learned today was, is of twenty, with twenty-nine governor's schools in the state of Virginia, this is the only one for the fine arts, and the professionalism that's there was really something to behold today. So if we could go back to that, I'd appreciate it.
You're talking about an arts and theater district?
Yes, that's what I mean by an arts district, arts theater, public art, museums, and theater, all together, and have a definitive place, but we can, when the time comes, we'll just rediscuss that on an afternoon, probably a Tuesday. Also, just to drug you today, in our budget, and I wasn't for the budget discussion, but I really need to commend the manager and his staff on assisting and coming up with the co-occurring court, that allows us now to handle individuals who have both mental illness and suffer from severe alcohol and narcotic abuse, which we often see, if somebody with PTSD comes into the system, oftentimes they're self-medicating with some kind of narcotic, and they were fallen within a gap in our system, our justice system, that didn't allow them to have treatment through the drug court or the mental health court, because you can't have both, of all the great ironies, you couldn't have both and receive treatment, you couldn't go to either court, you went to jail. And this, this really is a significant undertaking that we've done to fill 25 spaces, many of them will primarily be veterans, because they will come back with the mental health issues and the self-medicating issues. And the reason I mention it is, today was the drug court graduation, and the manager was there, Anthony, the vice mayor, did a tremendous job representing the council there, just, you did a great job, and spoke wonderfully, I know it was from the heart and it was off the cuff, it was nothing prepared, and read our proclamation from the mayor's office. So it really is something that was very important, it's the city's money, and we saw the end result, we saw healthy people who had committed crimes, and had problems, and came out, had graduated and were healthy, and now we have an opportunity to do something very special. And I had contacted, hopefully soon, he may have already contacted me back, was Lou Hanson from the pilot, to look into this program, because it is so special, and one of a kind to have that combination. So I want to thank Marcus, and the money you're putting into that is very special to the people, the courts, I know CSB has worked very hard, and it's just wonderful to see, so I want to make sure that got across. I think that was the only two things I really wanted to focus on, there were two things that occurred today. I had looked at the budget, I asked certain questions of the manager, and he answered those questions, we appreciate it, and anything else, I'll probably just do offline with you. Thank you very much, you did a great job, and I appreciate the $2 million awards, kind of, Terry and Barclay worked hard for that, and that really is taking us where we need to be.
Yeah, I was, I was reading an article in the pilot that suggested that the Redevelopment Housing Authority wanted to get more work from us. I'm one who has always been very critical of Redevelopment Housing Authority, especially now. This is not the Redevelopment Housing Authority that had put an offer on the map years ago for, you know, rebuilding an older city. This is not the Redevelopment Housing Authority that had the old Dawes, old Cole, and Julian Raskin as chairmen. The Housing Authority now is not as widely regarded by HUD as it was back in the old days. And I'm just wondering, if this were to occur, who would actually do the work? I mean, with the Housing Authority, if we gave them additional work, would they turn it over to the Builders Guild? If they did, that is, that eliminates blacks and minor and other minority participation. And I'm just opposed to us doing more with the Housing Authority. $250,000 for a study on the governor's school seems to me a bit much, it seems, and I support the governor's school, you know, 100%, but it seems to me that they could have gotten students from ODU and Norfolk State, or we could have gotten students from ODU and Norfolk State, to do that same study, you know, for much less. And I am just, well, years ago, none of you on council, except Paul, I've been an advocate of dismantling the Housing Authority, but by the fact that we need them to get certain grants is why we have to have them. And, but I just hope that we won't, you know, do any more business, turn any of our business over to the Housing Authority, because I don't think we're gonna get the results, we have people who are still suffering now from work that the Housing Authority has given to contractors, and I just, I'm just strongly opposed to us doing any more business with the Housing Authority, especially when it comes to work that we are letting out, you know, to get done. And, and also, several months ago, I floated the idea, suggested that we needed to try to make this region an educational destination, you know, with the universities and community colleges that we have here, where even the ones over, you know, on the other side of Hampton, and Christopher Newport, and William Murray, that we need to get together to make this an educational destination. It'll do two things, number one, it'll be an economic engine, you know, for this entire region, but it also, it would, it would grow our workforce, we could continue to grow our workforce, but, you know, I said this several months ago, and it's never, never gone anywhere, we went out and hired a guy to come in and, you know, you know, to deal with the military, that sort of, that sort of takes care of itself, and that's not the first time we've done it, we did that years ago, and really not, didn't get a lot of fruit, you know, from that particular effort. But I really believe that we need to make this region, and I don't know whether we have to go to get participation from other cities or not, but this region needs to be an education destination. And we have quality universities here, we have programs, we have Eastern Virginia Medical School, Hampton University, ODU, Norfolk State, William Murray, and it would just give this entire region, you know, a boost in terms of economic development. And it's something that I really, you know, but this is the second time that I'm asking about it, but it's something I believe that would really enhance this entire region. Marcus, I don't know how you'd get it done, but I think you really need to convene a group of people to see if we can get it, you know, get it moving.
I totally agree with you. Mr. Riddick, we kind of fell off a little bit, last year, we did have a series of meetings, or I did, with the presidents of the five universities associated with Norfolk, but we can, through winter, we can, we can get that back on track, and to see to what extent we can do exactly what you're asking. In fact, I had forgotten, you had briefly said that there were, you had reported on that, right, they had gotten together. I had forgotten, he did mention something about it, it was a while ago.
May I, Mr. Riddick?
That's a good idea.
I'm sorry. The $250,000 for the feasibility for the governor's school was an architectural fee, and in order to have the estimate of the cost of the construction, the architect was engaged, and so that, well, it gets described as a feasibility fee, it's really a design fee, so that it's not that, it's pretty typical.
Okay, good, well, thanks, Ed.
That's a nine point some million dollar renovation.
Nine and a half million dollar effort.
I only have one thing, I know there's about five ordinances tonight about refunds to businesses for business license, I know we had one a few weeks ago, what's going, for machine tech, what's going on with that? It's a significant amount of money, is it, we just, I mean, I don't think the whole time I've been on council, I've seen one of those, and I think we have-
Yeah, I have the same question.
We have five, we had-
$200,000 tonight.
Yeah, I mean, what's happening, are we over-assessing, or are we-
Councilman, when, what occurred, and I believe it may have been in the December or January timeframe, the council passed an ordinance, which basically said that refunds, I guess, based on erroneous assessments, above $2,500 would have to come to the council. So prior to that ordinance, these refunds were-
Were you just doing, we didn't know about it?
They were current. So right now, everything that's above, you know, $2,500, that falls into that category, has to come to council, that's why you're seeing-
So are we, is this a higher, are we doing more now than we have in the past, or just about the same amount we have every year?
I think it's about the same amount.
Well, how do we, just tell me, give me, do they go in and appraise their office equipment, or would?
Um, that, I've got, and this would be an improvement, that if we told you in each one what it was-
What example?
That the Odyssey Healthcare, Odyssey moved to Virginia Beach, but went ahead and fully paid its business license in Norfolk, and then after the fact, the accountants pointed it out, and, and they were correct, that Odyssey just kept paying out of practice, so that's the first one-
They paid in Norfolk after they moved to Virginia?
Yes, yeah, yes, yes, yes. And so that, I've got the reasons for all of them, so that, it's similar to that, but each one is a little bit different, but it is just in the normal course of business, that with the multitude of personal property assessments, that there is just gonna be some instances where you have that, that change, that correction.
Okay, so you're telling me this is about the normal now?
Yes, yes.
We're just being, we're, we're being consistent with state code. State code had, basically, state code said that anything above $2,500 has to go through a process. In the past, we wasn't following the process, so to be in compliance with state code, we're now, the city ordinance now matches state code ordinance, so we're consistent.
I understand that, but I guess, what I'm hearing is that there's no blip in the amount that we're-
Right.
It is, but it is, but it's, it's, we don't lose money, but, I mean, basically.
But we're, but we're pretty level on year-to-year, year-over-year for the amounts that we-
Normally what happens is, you get an assessment book, and the assessment book may say that the city projections look like we're gonna collect about 56 million, and the reality of it is, it's not 56 million, it's more like 30 million. And so, you think that there's 56 million out there, and it's not 56 million out there, it's more like 30 million out there. And so it's not money that you can anticipate in the upcoming budget year that you will have available to be able to use. So basically, what this does, and hopes that, you know, that we would, you know, that, well, that as attrition that the process will get to, where we will minimize-
Over time, it may get, it may get lower, but Marcus, in your budget, is putting in the so-called 30 million, is what he thinks is accurate.
I'm saying, this is, but this is not, we wouldn't know about it, brand change, a lot of things unusual.
Right, right.
Except we probably are bringing a little discipline to it that didn't occur.
Right.
Just very quickly, I wanted to thank everybody for their contribution last week, for the employee week and the helping Norfolk, that we had a really good turnout for the walk-run on Wednesday, and I know we had the, the biking to work, and also the, the breakfast on Friday, so it was a great, and just one more week this Saturday for the last night, last day for bike Norfolk, so, no, I guess two more weeks, no, one more week, one more week, it's this weekend, so that would be great. The other thing, I went to a, a graduation for this Up Center, and for those of you that haven't been involved in this, it's right off of Hampton Boulevard and 26th Street, it's really a great program for many of our citizens, and I encourage you to get involved in this, it's helping a lot of previous felons coming back to the workplace, helping them with GEDs and giving work skills, so it's a, really been, a, done a terrific job for our citizens. And lastly, can we get an update on two things? One, I hope Denise will give us regular updates on the progress of the coal plant, as we said we would do with our resolution that we all, that some of you passed. And secondly-
(laughing)
Yeah, yeah. And, secondly, can we get an update on how the hiring for the police chief is going? That's all.
We don't get the update, only the five of us have heard it from what we get, you didn't want it.
That's right. You got that right.
Well, first, I want to thank James, today we went out to Valentine this morning and did a code sweep, and I gotta tell you, you know, we, we had sit around the tables some weeks, well, about a month or two ago, and, you know, we talked about the murders that had taken place in that community, but it was amazing to be able to stand at the end of one corner, and from a panoramic view, to be able to see all of the, the community had gone and put cones out, big orange cones, where you can actually see, from the middle of the street, you can see every cone representing the baddies, whether they got shot in the street or shot in the house, they were all within sight, I mean, within a 50 yards, they were all right there in a concentrated area.
Like five of them, right?
Yeah, and, and so, you know, it was great, it meant a lot to the community to get staff to come out today and talk about, you know, what we can do to mitigate some of the issues, and like I said, I mean, they're not majors, they're not things that will cost us money, they're just good housekeeping, good code enforcement, good policing. Police have turned it up and done a tremendous job in there to date on those issues, so, you know, thanks for allowing James, it was great today out there. Second thing, you know, I, I was thinking about this one, I think the last time I had a brainstorm like this one, Mayor, was the, it was the Norfolk Jazz Festival, we brought that back. And I was watching 60 Minutes about a week or two ago, and the guy that played Lieutenant Dan, he has a band, and he goes around to various cities in the country, and they put on a concert for the wounded veterans, and I was thinking, I said, we have the largest military installation here, and we always pride ourselves about our support for the military, and there's a lot of young men and women that are walking around here that are veterans, that are amputees, that, you know, that, that, that don't necessarily get the necessary financial help from the, from the government, whether it be retrofitting their appliance, I mean, their cabinets, or ramp, or just the cost of prosthetics. We know that during Vietnam War, during the Vietnam War, that the, the people that are sustaining the types of injuries that they are today, they wouldn't have lived in, but these, these folk are living, and they're, they're living and, and, uh, trickling back into normal life, and I just thought that, you know, we, something that wouldn't cost the city money, but looking at off-date in the festival part, and seeing of course amenable to, you know, doing a concert to raise money for our veterans, to make it a, a annual thing, and then the money would go in a pot to help our wounded veterans or these folk that we are trying to help. Now, we talk about helping them in terms of transitioning back in society with jobs and opportunities, but a lot of them, just, you know, just the day-to-day basic needs they're struggling with, and, you know, that's just one of the brainstorms that I thought that, you know, if we were amenable to doing it, that that was something that I felt very strongly about, in terms of us being the center of the region, and us being a, you know, we are, we're military town, and that we could help some people, and if we seeded a, an event where it took care of her cause, and she brought in a headline, and we raised money, you put a little bit away, and you have like a grant, a scholarship, that you can help these folk out, and, you know, it would cost the city nothing, but we would also benefit from that, you know, gravely in terms of-
Why don't we sit down and try to flesh out a program, and then bring it back to the council?
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, great.
Just a question about the budget, can you explain again the increase in staff in the commissioner of the revenues office, and, because none of the other constitutional officers have an increase in staff, and I'm just wondering where those positions are going, or?
Sure, the, I think I can do it from memory, they're, long story short, it's not an increase in staff in the commissioner of revenues office, basically, what we've done for years is we've had these positions called special project positions, that they're technically supposed to last no more than two years. We have some special project positions that have gone on for 10 years plus, so what we tried to do is just truth in advertising in the budget, those people that are already here, working here, and we had the same case, I think, in IT and a couple other departments, we just converted those individuals who've been working here for a long period of time that don't show up in the budget as a position count, but show up in terms of the dollars, and we've just converted them to what I call a full-time equivalent position, so no new staff.
Are they, are those positions needed to be, I mean, do we need to keep them as full-time, or are they, I mean, what?
Sure, let me try to go into it a different way. A special project position is, let's say, sometimes an easy position to create, for the most part, it should be a special project, it should be a short period of time. To answer your question directly about those four positions in the commissioner of revenues office, I'm not sure about what they do, we were just trying to look at all of the positions in the city, and anything that was a special project that was way beyond two years, that was already budgeted, we converted it to a full-time position. Whether they're needed, we can look at all special projects.
I mean, I don't want, obviously, I'm not advocating that anybody lose their jobs, but I'm just wondering that there's, some of the other constitutional officers have been able to do more with less, and I'm just wondering why we're not realigning, or looking at some of the positions there and saying, you know, is there, are there services that, do we need to continue, like DMV, does that need to continue there, can that be moved? I think George Schaefer has mentioned that his office could probably take that, I'm just, you know, everybody has to streamline right now in, in government, so why, why this?
Sure, no, I understand what you're saying, you know, with some of the constitutional officers, we get a 100% reimbursement from the state. For instance, let's say the sheriff's department, and some of our constitutional officers, like in the treasurer's department or the commissioner of revenue, some of the reimbursement is 50%, or not 100%. If you start to look at those positions, in other words, if you're asking, let's look at those positions that are revenue-producing, that would be a good start, and you look at those positions that are revenue-producing versus those positions that are 100% locally funded, that may not be revenue-producing, we did not do that analysis, but I think that's a fair analysis.
But these are, I mean, but these, these are not actually new positions?
Not new positions.
These are people that have already been working there.
Right, but they were for special projects that are no longer being funded, in a sense-
Well, no, no, I'm saying, it was a determination that should not, in my opinion, have been made. It should have been, either you have a person who is a full-time person that works for the city, that's in a position count, or they're not, and again, we have some of these, in the purest sense of special project, two years or less, and it goes away. But again, we've had some people in special project positions for 10 years plus, and we just don't think that's, that's correct.
Do those people who were considered special projects, do, do they always get benefits and the whole, I mean, were they considered full-time employees as a special project person, or were they considered full-time temporarys?
They are full-time, but I think the special project provision doesn't permit them to be in the retirement system unless they exceed two years, and the intent- And the intent of the position is that they not exceed two years. And so that it's a more streamlined, easier way to add an employee. It doesn't have all of the civil service classifications and processes and that sometimes is not properly used.
So they were always there, we just never counted them. Now we're counting them.
That's essentially right.
That's the plain, the long and short of it.
That's right.
Okay.
Marcus, Tommy brings up a good point. When you read the budget, you don't understand it. What you just said makes sense to us. Reading the budget, it looks like a constitutional officer got four more employees when everybody else is, you know, is, you know, trying to be more efficient and not need them. So some sort of explanation when the budget is adopted, you know, as you, as people come to see it in the future, ought to be inserted in the budget as to why, why that is occurring. And I think it only occurred in her office, in the Commissioner's office. So that would be helpful. But also, I mean, I think in the future, as we, you know, that there are a lot of part-time, there are a lot of employees that we pay for, for the constitutional officers. I mean, all of them. That would bear some review routinely, I mean, every few years. And we haven't done it in a long time to see, you know, how many of these people are hanging around, because we're going to be there for two years or all of a sudden hanging around for five, six, eight, 10 years. And should we be continuing to foot the bill?
Right. Well, just to piggyback on that, you know, just like you're taking the real estate senior relief program out, well, the people that were running that, that department, I think it was three, well, you bring them over, I'm assuming you're leaving them, you know. So then you got, if there's vacancies there, do you take the vacancies away and use those three or do you keep the three and the vacancies? Because you don't want to fire nobody, but you may have vacancies. Do you freeze the vacancies?
Right.
And, you know, and, or do you just leave the three and keep the vacancies open as well? Because if you don't have, you don't have the work, you know, then there has to be some reorg going on internally, so.
Right. I agree with you. If it's fine with the council, you know, what we could do pretty quickly is that there are, again, constitutional officers that are 100% funded by the state. And I separate the Sheriff's Office and the Clerk and the Commonwealth Attorney from, I'd say, the Treasurer and the Commissioner of Revenue, because some of those positions in the Treasurer's Office and the Commissioner of Revenue are not 100% funded, okay? Because they do help us in terms of producing revenue. Then we have some positions in those two offices that are 100% city-funded. And we could review all of those 100% city-funded positions to see to what extent they are revenue generating. And, you know, what are we getting for the resources that we're putting into those positions? Because all of them are not revenue generating.
All right.
Okay.
That's it. I've just, one short thing I'm going to pass around here. An article that I rented in the Rishon Times just about Sunday that says, "Anti-Poverty Panel Seeks Input." I don't want to rock any boats today, but I mean, we'll bring it back. I just want to bring it back later. And if there are not five people who want to do this, okay. But they got 51 people on the task force, and I'm talking about 16 or 17, 18. But, I mean, there's, there's some numbers in here that talk about childhood poverty. The city has the fifth highest child poverty rate in the state at 35%. I don't know what ours is. I mean, it'd be interesting to take a look, but why don't you just pass them down? And we'll bring it back sometime when we have time. Okay, then you're Mr. Manager, the Governor's School progress.
Mayor, while you're getting teed up, I just wanted to remind you guys again, we have the Virginia First Cities coming to Norfolk on June 1st. Mayor will be welcoming the delegation. We're going to have some of our state delegation here as well, some elected officials around the state. If you guys' schedule permits, we would like to, I would hope that you guys will come out and have an opportunity to meet the committee and see what we're working on with the Virginia First Cities and how it relates to the City of Norfolk and the initiatives that we're working on, so.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you may recall, I last briefed you on our Governor's School progress on March 27th, the day before we met with the Board of Directors of the Governor's School and the Committee of Superintendents. Both the Board of Directors and the Committee of Superintendents accepted our proposal, which includes consolidating a variety of locations across the city into the Monroe Building on Granby Street. As the comments at the beginning of the meeting indicated, the building has been in disrepair for a number of years. And we're not only excited to continue to have these talented young people from across the region come to Norfolk, but the ability to have them learning and applying their trade in a renovated Monroe Building. Couple slides today just to provide you with some information. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. We've gone through, along with the NRHA, and arrived at total renovation cost of 9.61 million. That 9.61 million gets broken up into two portions, the Governor's School portion and the non-Governor's School portion. The non-Governor's School portion is in support of the Wells Theatre that the city leases and the Virginia Stage Company that operates the backup house, if you will. So they would continue to do that. The breakup of these two lines is the Governor's School's about 82% and the Virginia Stage Company would be about 18%. The total cost of renovation at 9.61 million is funded with a variety of line items. As you can see, the bank loan, RCIP, including the FY13 proposed amount, historic tax credits, and a private donor. The bank loan I will focus on on the next page as these items will not have ongoing repayment obligations. The bank loan is a 4.76 million portion of the total renovation cost. We are working with, again, NRHA and the Governor's School to arrive at a lease, which, again, the Governor's School's agreed to, that would be for a 30-year period. The financing, this bank loan would be for amortized over a 25-year period. And the debt service on this 4.76 million, based on our estimates, and we've used a higher interest rate than we believe we'd be able to attain from a banking institution, would be sufficient to cover, would be sufficiently covered by the 360,000 from the Governor's School. One of the nuances in there is the city will continue to be responsible for the maintenance of the building after the renovation, is that we would be establishing a reserve account. That reserve account would first and foremost be used, if needed, to cover any shortfalls in debt service. And if there are no shortfalls in debt service, that reserve account would also be available to be used for any ongoing capital maintenance. I've mentioned the potential for an increase in debt service because while we're going to amortize this debt over 25 years, the banking, local banking institutions have indicated that we would be able to lock in our interest rate from anywhere to seven to 10 years. Said differently, somewhere between seven and 10 years, the interest rate will be reset. At that interest rate reset, it may go up, it may go down, which is why we believe that the reserve fund is the most appropriate way to hedge any potential exposure going forward.
Is that, is there a cap on how much the rate can adjust to?
We won't know the final terms until we actually receive the financing from the bank. We're waiting for the building transfer. And in my timeline, we're looking at securing the financing in late June with council's consideration and action on conveyance this evening. We have the required 30-day waiting period, so on June 22nd, it will officially happen. But at that point, we will have our financing in place. And we do believe that even with the indicative interest rate that we've received from a local bank, it's more than 1% below the estimate that we've been using. So we have capacity. Based on that analysis, there are revenues that go into the reserve account over that seven to 10-year period that would allow us to go 2% above the estimated interest rate that we view.
So your answer would be no, because you're going, right, seven to 10 years, you're going back out again.
Yes.
And whatever the market, whatever the rates are, the rates are.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Last slide is looking at the timeline, things that have occurred today. I apologize for the alignment of the dates. We have the city's consideration for conveyance, NRHA, with the entity to be established that will affect leases, lease negotiations, and federal tax credits late this month. We've actually received approval of both federal and state tax credits with some minor conditions that we believe we will not have any problems satisfying. Again, the end of June, the conveyance will actually take place. Demolition would begin in the beginning of July, with the renovations beginning in the beginning of September. Our certificate of occupancy is the primary target date because right after this August 30th, 2013 timeframe, Governor's School will be coming back in to begin their 2013, 2014 school year.
That's great. Great. It's a great project, especially when you consider the building right now is almost condemned. It's great. 350-some students will be there daily. It would be a buzz.
Is everything straight with Virginia Stage as far as their needs for storage, you know, the space that they're not going to have?
Yeah, staff to staff, we've been having a number of discussions. My understanding right now that there are options on the table that are not all in one place, but it's doable.
And they're satisfied with?
I think that it's fair to say that when you move from one place to another, to say they're 100% satisfied, I don't think that that's fair. I do believe that they would say that we've been accommodating to make this work.
Because that's an important part.
Sure.
Just one other thing. I mean, I want to congratulate Darryl and Kathy Shelton back here. This has been a sort of a tricky piece of work, because you've had a lot of people try to get to the table, all of these various localities, the Virginia Stage Company, try to keep everybody happy and then still make it, you know, a really viable project. And this is more than viable. You didn't, never told us what the tax credits were going to be, I mean, how much we might get there. But I think that you're going to stick that in the reserve fund or whatever you're going to do with the tax credits, but that will be, or less than the loan amount or whatever you want to do, whatever you pull that rabbit out of your hat. This has really been a nice piece of entrepreneurial business for the city, some, you know, some really, I think, first-class thinking. It's a lot more than we would normally get in a, in a sale or a purchase of a property. I mean, they, they set out to make this thing happen and they made it happen. And I think you've done a nice job, really, truly. Thank you. Thanks, Kathy. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as the city manager indicated to you, I have a series of fairly brief presentations for you on several land use items on which we had at least one planning commissioner cast a negative vote, which means you want the additional information as it comes to you. First of these is for a convenience store with gasoline sales on East Little Creek Road. It's called Fast Fuel. That is not a misprint. There is no T. It's Fast Fuels. What they're looking for is a special exception, how to operate as a gas station, and they also want to offer the ABC off-premise sale. The establishment is located not in any particular civic league, but it is in the immediate vicinity of Camellia Shores, North Camellia Acres, in Eastland, Saratoga. It is currently a legally non-conforming gas station and convenience store because it doesn't have the special exception for gas sales. And what they wanted to do was add the off-premise ABC sales, which they don't have right now. And we would require that they come into conformity with other ordinance provisions in order to do that, hence the two special exceptions that would be coming to you in two weeks. They are designated as commercial office in the general plan, and the area is as own to see to, meaning the use is appropriate if they get the two special exceptions. The staff recommendation is approval because it is consistent with the general plan and it meets all ordinance requirements for the use. At the planning commission, the vote was five to one for approval. Five members agreed with staff that it did meet all the criteria. One expressed concern about the concentration of ABC off-premise establishments in the area. This don't, that we're very close to a school, and for that reason, we created this map. This does illustrate all of the locations in the city that do have a special exception for ABC off-premise sales, and the two red ones are pending. This one you'll be voting on tonight, and this is the site of Fast Fuels. And there are three schools in the area that are designated by the flags.
Hang on one second. The, this Fast Fuel, is that the intersection, is it, is A Garden, Little Creek?
Yeah.
Yes.
And the blue?
The blue are existing ABC, existing establishments with special exceptions for ABC off-premise sites.
If you remember the gas station that's across the street from it, we had a debate about it because it was the airport gas station, and there was opposition, but we were, because of the school issue, but we were arguing that the 7-Eleven that's further down the street, and they were the only ones that weren't being allowed. My, my concern with it, though, is that the airport convenience store has been there for enough time and established the community where these are brand-new owners, I believe. They've only been, I think that gas station's only been open for about a month, maybe a month or two months. It's, it just opened.
The gas station has been open longer than that because it would have otherwise required a special exception.
It's been there a while.
It is non-conforming.
No, I'm saying that, I'm saying the, it was an Exxon before that, or Texaco. But as far as this company is concerned, it has not been there that long.
Right.
There are new chain, I think, that's moving into the area and buying up old gas stations that have closed.
On, on the right, Frank, you have the red dot. I take it that's the intersection?
This, this is the Fast Fuel site. This is the airport.
And what's the one behind you?
This is the 7-Eleven, and this is a drugstore. I can't remember whether it's a Walgreens.
The Walgreens is there, doesn't the seven, there's a seven next to the Walgreens, Frank. That, you're in, you're in the neighborhood back there.
You are back in the neighborhood.
Yeah, that, that one dot is off a little bit, probably.
Yeah, it's off.
They're, they're all generally centered.
Okay, because the 7-Eleven is, is on the same block as the Walgreens, and I'm sure it's.
So could you point out where the schools are?
You have a school here.
At St. Pius.
Here.
Is A Garden and Little Creek.
And Cavalry's there.
These are the only three that we were showing up as schools on our record.
Cavalry's there. Cavalry's there.
What's the concern about alcohol?
This was, as Mr. Smiggle indicated, planning commission did also have a similar recommendation on this location of, for the Airport Quick Mark. And that got to city council, and the city council originally denied it, and then the neighborhood came out and the neighborhood said that it appeared to them that there was a, a different treatment for the big chains and the smaller guys. So you asked us to go back in and revise the ordinance requirements for ABC establishments. And when we did that, you came back in and they, Airport Quick Mark came back in at that point and applied and was granted the special exception at that point. There is nothing.
My question is, why, what is the data to demonstrate that this is something we don't want in proximity to a school?
We have no doubt of the suggestion.
Well, and those schools are either elementary or middle school.
It was used as a.
Right, so I mean, have we as a council used that as a criteria before on, on voting on, on off?
No.
Okay. I knew we had the policy about proximity to residential areas, but.
And it was this issue that caught you, where you directed us to revisit the criteria. And it still does not address proximity to a school. It deals with proximity to residential uses and trying to increase the screening from those uses.
Frank, real quick, did they go to the civic leagues and discuss this?
I honestly don't know.
I don't think they did, because none of the civic leagues.
We, we sent a letter.
Not to our attention. Peggy's civic league didn't say anything about it.
Well, I sent a letter out over my signature to every civic league that's in the area, and we heard nothing on this one. and we, we heard nothing on this one. We heard a lot about the one that I'll talk about now, next, which is an existing entertainment establishment downtown on Grammy Street, Jack Quinn's. This is an establishment that is located downtown. They have come in wanting to amend their existing special exception. What they want to do is add the ability to have entertainment on the second floor and to change the forms of entertainment, and at the same time, they're looking to replace managers. Just so you can see what's going on, right now, they are authorized to be open from 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM daily. They're looking to change that to drop one hour per day, Monday through Saturday. Their hours for alcohol sales are proposed to remain unchanged at 11:00 AM to 1:45 PM. Capacity would actually go down. This is because of a building code change since they were originally approved. It would drop from 242 seats to 195 seats, past total capacity dropping by 35 people. And then what they are currently allowed to do is four-person bands with two pianos. They want to add five-person bands, karaoke, fashion show, comedian, and open microphone, with the bigger issue being they want to put entertainment on the second floor. You've asked previously about the history. They initially came in in March of 2000, got their initial special exception. That was revised in February of 2010, where they added seats and modified entertainment. In June of last year, they came in asking for the same thing they're asking for now. That was recommended for denial by the planning commission, and rather than have that moved forward, they withdrew the request at that time, have waited the required period of time, and they're bringing it back in, the exact same request that they had on June of 2011. At the public hearing, we had lots of people show up. We had the applicant obviously spoke in support. We had two speakers, and we received letters of support from two citizens. In opposition, we had two residents of the condo association, of the condo development that is above the building, and we also had letters of opposition from the downtown Norfolk Civic League and the Portlock Condominium Association, and their complaint or their issue is the noise that is generated by entertainment on the second floor, which they have had in the past, and it's been an issue with the bar task force because based on their special exception, it's not allowed. And they, considering the impact of noise on residents of the condos that are immediately above, above the area on the second floor where they're proposing to have entertainment, our recommendation is denial. Planning commission, by unanimous six to nothing vote, also recommended denial, considering the impact of the noise on residents immediately above where they're proposing to do the entertainment.
Frank, how many condos are there?
In the building? I don't know.
What was their response when it was mentioned that you have people the floor above you, and you want to put a band on that second floor? What was their response? I mean, did they, was there any issue at all? Did they care? Did they apologize and say, we're insulated, and they won't hear us?
What they've indicated is that there is some insulation that they think would work. The comment that was made by Mr. Diamondstein on the planning commission, because the people who came out in opposition are people who live immediately above it, if we're getting this many complaints about noise and you're not supposed to have entertainment here, we can only imagine how much worse it's going to be if you put entertainment immediately below these people.
So I thought it was a club already up there. I thought they were using it as a.
They are not supposed to have entertainment up there, and that's the issue that the entertainment task force has gone in and had repeated issues.
So are they going to withdraw this, the same as they did the last time?
No.
What is the rationale?
Why do I not think they're going to withdraw it? I think they want to make their argument.
I'm just curious, because they withdrew it last time when they had denied.
Well, the reason, the other issue they had last time is.
I think that works up there, except for the noise. Except for the noise at all. I mean, it's a nice room, and they got a nice bar. I mean, it's.
If we didn't have the noise issue, I would be saying this is, this is a great thing to deal with.
Why can't they flip it, Frank? I mean, honestly, why can't they move the entertainment downstairs and then flip it upstairs?
That would be an operational issue for them.
They've got some music downstairs.
That's what they have now.
Yeah, they do have entertainment downstairs.
So they.
They're just trying to run, as you said, they're trying to run two different places.
Two different establishments.
There'll be two names under a single.
Well, Frank, that, that, I knew that bill when it sold, it was going to be, because it's only two people, one person on the bottom and then another person on the top, and they never, I knew that was going to be an issue when that, when that sold.
It always is when you have condos directly above an entertainment establishment. The other reason they withdrew last time is planning commission trying to, to get a deal between the condo association and the club, proposed that the hours for entertainment on the second floor for all amplified noise in at 10:00 PM. The representative of the club agreed to that at planning commission. The owner of the club, when he found out that what his representative had done, said he didn't agree with that, and I said, I won't change it because this is what planning commission recommended. You'd have to come before City Council and ask it to be changed. He withdrew the application rather than do that. So, I think I have one more to give you tonight, and then we'll hold off on the other one. This is for Nick's Diner, which is an existing non-conforming use in Ocean View. It is a restaurant right now. And what they want to do is they want to change it to an eating and drinking establishment. They want the ability to offer alcohol. Well, it is a legally non-conforming use, just to give you where it is. It is in the Cottage Line neighborhood, and it's operated as a restaurant for 30 years.
Don Williams used to own it.
So it's been there a very long time. The issue you've got is that its zoning is residential, and by ordinance, you cannot issue a special exception for alcohol unless the zoning is non-residential. So they came in and they filed for a plan amendment. This is the building that it is in. They filed for a plan amendment and a rezoning to go from R-12 medium density residential to conditional C2. Conditions I proposed would limit the uses.
Hang on, before you go, can you go back real quick?
Yes.
All right. The, the red marker is on the current, the steps we're talking about.
Yes.
To the right of the red marker.
Beach pub.
Right.
That just had the shooting.
Is that a, that was, is it beach pub? Now, what was it before?
It's always been, it's grandfathered in.
It's another grandfathered establishment.
But that's, but that's a, isn't that a beer garden kind of place? It's not a restaurant.
It's more of a beer place. It's a bar.
Beer garden.
What's that behind?
This was originally approved by City Council, I want to say, as a wave runner establishment. It's now obvious as offices.
They just renovated it.
Yeah. But this actually gives you an idea.
It was Mix. It was Mix, not Paintball. Mix. Yeah, now it's Nick's.
The bank thing was across the street.
No, they, then they, they got, something happened, they moved across the street.
Some mixed book.
No, it's not Nick's.
For the most part.
They'd be better off keeping it residential.
So this shows you the zoning pattern or the plan amendment pattern, and what you're seeing on the plan amendment is that if you look up Chesapeake, Chesapeake Street, this is a single isolated residentially designated parcel on the east side of Chesapeake Street in this area. The property to the north, this property was designated commercial by City Council in 2002. Prior to that, all of this was residential, and you only had the commercial on the south side of Ocean View. The zoning reflects the exact same thing. You have this one isolated parcel on the east side of Chesapeake Street, and the conditions that they've got, what is, I indicated, limited to a restaurant or an eating and drinking establishment, and I also committed to limit the hours. What the zoning would do would be eliminate the non-conforming status of the property. So what they have proposed is to limit their hours of operation from 5:00 to, from 5:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Their hours for alcohol sales from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It's a very small place, maximum capacity of 48, 48 seats, housing 51 people, which would include the service staff.
What time they normally close?
Yeah, 6:00 PM. That's their proposal. They only, they really want to be able to do breakfast, lunch, and early afternoon.
Do they normally close for dinner, or they open?
They close at 6:00.
Oh, they close at 6:00? That's when they close the restaurant?
They, they open at 5:00 AM, so it is very limited hours. This was another one where we had major issues at the planning commission. Well, we had letters of support from three civic leagues, which was somewhat unusual. North Side, Pinewell, and Bayview all sent letters of support for this. We had three citizens who live in the immediate area come out in opposition because they don't want to have any of the commercial zoning on the north side of Ocean View, and the Cottage Line Civic League, in which it is actually located, also came out in opposition. Well, our recommendation is approval of the planning, of the plan amendment because of the change of conditions represented by the 2002 approval of the commercial to the north of this site. If that was approved, we'd recommend approval of the rezoning based on consistency with the adopted plan, and then if that was approved, we would recommend approval of the special exception based on the small size and limited hours of the establishment. Planning commission recommended denial by a vote of five to one.
Who was the one that was?
Lisa Chandler. The five who voted in opposition said they were listening to the immediate neighborhood and not to the larger area. The one person who was, who voted in opposition, voted in favor of the establishment, indicated that they agreed with the staff analysis and thought that the, the change made more sense.
Cottage Line Civic League voted against it, and one of the concerns is right when the applicant had turned in the application, there was the incidences that were happening at the beach pub, and so there was a lot of worry that putting another establishment that sells alcohol there. But right across the street, on today's agenda is the 905 Cafe, which is asking to extend their hours to 11:00. And, you know, there's, there is an interest for restaurants in that area, and the applicant did speak with all the civic leagues in that area. I was present at two of the meetings in which she spoke, in which there was, they were in favor of the application, and I've heard from the Cottage Line Civic League. You know, I think that original area was supposed to, originally, there was a concept to put condos there with some businesses underneath it, and I think that fell through with the economy, which is why that might have, there might have been some zoning changes. Frank, got it?
Before 2002.
Yeah, there was a big plan to do something over there, and the property owners were going to get together.
There's going to be some seniors.
Is there any, do we have any provisions that we could do a temporary? I mean, if we approve this, it's, it's forever unless we go back and take it away, but somebody had suggested, can we do a one-year type?
You can.
Put a sunset clause on it, but maybe not charge the applicant the same fees to come back if everything's okay, and it can automatically get renewed?
You can do, and you have done in a number of instances, a sunset on places that are serving alcohol on the special exception. We recommend if you're going to do that, you make it 18 months as opposed to a year, and the reason for that is if you do it for a year, people are coming in before we've got a full year's worth of data to evaluate. So in consultation with the attorneys, we've recommended if you add that sunset provision, that the, the special exception be good for 18 months, because that does give us a full 12 months to do a complete evaluation, working with the police.
Does the applicant have to pay the fees and everything again after the 18 months?
What we have proposed is that we develop an alternative fee schedule that would lay out some tiered rules for exactly this kind of situation, but the challenge we've got right now is that our fees are the lowest in the region, and they don't even cover the cost of advertising the items.
Frank, how many of these?
I don't remember ever.
We did it for Grammy Theater.
Yeah.
That one we did, that one dragged on for many years, and that was the one where we were doing it for a year, and it was like every six months we were having this start.
How many people are going to bet on that? I mean, I don't, by the time you put your capital costs in it, that's a tough one.
We've done it for, I want to say, three places, other than the Grammy Theater. It is not done frequently. We've done it for the Caribbean place out on, on Virginia Beach Boulevard, because they had, they had, it's typically not been a place like you're seeing here. It's typically a place where the police report is indicating we have had some issues at the site.
Frank, they want to close at 6:00?
Yes.
What's to keep them from once they get all this, come back in and stop and to?
They would have to, with the conditions that they've proposed, it would require a rezoning, because this is a condition of the rezoning, would require a change of zoning as well as a new special exception.
Have they always closed at 6:00?
To my knowledge, because the only, they've never talked to us about extending the hours earlier. The only issue they talked to us about was how early could we begin selling alcohol? And we told them that the policy that we have been applying citywide has been you don't begin before 11:00 AM, which is why they, they said, we'll live with that if that's the city policy. And we'll save the last one for later.
Nothing good happens until 6:00 PM.
All right, Mr. Manager.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, as I mentioned earlier in the overview tonight, we will have, the council will have an opportunity to discuss the, my recommendation related to Waterside on the 5th, and we set aside some time tonight. If there are some specific questions that you would like for us to gather in preparation of that meeting, I could save it for last, and we could do a hurricane prepared, so we can go into it right now. It's whatever, it's a pleasure of the council.
Well, let's, let's do it now, because we're scheduled to 5th. And for the council's benefit, I mean, I thought we want to not schedule anything else that day, and so we could just focus on this, but I thought it'd be a good idea with talking with the manager, we had some special concerns or some information, special information, we may not have much, but if there is some, that we want to get out on the table so we can get it before that, before that meeting, and this would be an appropriate time to ask if you had any questions or, you know, we can go around the table, we can raise our hands, or we can do what you want to.
This would be with us in Cordish.
Yeah.
Discussions with me.
Right.
I think that, I think the, for me, the key issues are going to be a lease. Lease term is significant, to know what the term is. Payments, what the payments would be, how they would be structured. Can I go on, Paul?
Sure.
Do you mind? You had mentioned also something about some credits. I'm curious what credits they're seeking. I think that was mentioned at some point when you had mentioned Cordish. I think that I've seen the pictures of restaurants and things, but what else besides restaurants and bars would be placed within the Waterside itself? And third, there's, I've seen the number 12 to 13, but in reality, is that Marcus, is that really something that's realistic? Meaning, is it better to start with three or four or five, a legitimate number that appears legitimate to us, and then moving on and expanding from there? And then what would they do with the remainder of the facility if you only start with three, four, or five restaurants? What else would they do? Also, would they seek, and I've been online and looked at, was it Pike's Place, which really appears to be a shopping mall to me from what I saw online, but what else would they plan on integrating? And I may have asked you this, such as, you know, the mention of a fish market, is that viable? A farmer's market, is that viable in that area? I think also we need to consider ourselves parking. Do we, if we expect people to come downtown, we may want to discuss amongst ourselves, I don't know if this is for Cordish or not, but perhaps a Waterside garage after, let's say, 6:00 PM, no fee, something to that effect, or we recoup it back through somehow, through sales within Waterside themselves, Waterside itself. I don't remember seeing anything about the marina, and would they, in particular, would there be restructuring of the marina? And if so, what would be, or what would be their study or focus on capturing? Because I can tell you, I watch the yachts come through the inner, our own inner harbor, and as they come through, they, a lot of them just go right past us. What would they seek to capture that business? Would they contemplate, let's say, putting a West Marine or that type of a facility within Waterside? within Waterside that allows access to boaters and yachts? I mean, those are just off-the-cuff things that I've talked and mentioned to others.
Are you gonna leave anything for us to bring up?
Sorry. But I mean, I've been, I've been holding it in, Tom. I can finally let it out, man.
That was good, that was good. You covered everything I wanted to hear.
But I think that the, those lease terms, going back to the beginning, I mean, I think the lease is, is really the financial significance of the deal. And, you know, term is significant, cost is significant. And I'm gonna use, for lack of a better term, and I apologize to the city attorney, but the recapture of it. If there is no, if there's no performance, how, if, or if the performance lacks projected, you know, are the projections part of the lease or is that a separate exhibit or document that's not considered part of the lease? And if it's not, then what recapture do we have as a remedy? Or what, what remedies would exist short of recapture, taking the property back over that they would in turn pay us perhaps? So, you know, there's a certain fee that we may advertise over time. So it's just those types of issues, and I apologize if it, those are, I was holding it, I'm glad I was first to get, and if I think of the others that I had in my head, I'll, I'll let you know.
Marcus, would the marina be a part of that? Because you've got a separate RFP out on the street, so I don't think they would be a part of that.
We do have a separate RFP on the street. I'd hope that in the discussions though, that if that is something, then it'll make sense.
We should have a vision from them on, even if it's a separate.
But they would still, we'd still want them to have some kind of a store or something that caters to, what a term I just learned, snowbirds.
Right.
You know, that how do we get, they bypass our area, but how do we get them to come in if we have some kind of shops in there that cater to our boaters?
It's actually beyond just shops, it's also facilities.
Facilities.
Right, that's why I mentioned.
There've been, there are issues with the storing of gasoline in that location too, I understand. But Marcus, in their proposal, didn't they say they wanted to control the marina?
Well, I would say that.
I mean, in their written, didn't they, didn't they absolutely say? I don't know who else is, yes, yes, okay. So they, in their proposal, written proposal was, they said it was necessary for them to control the marina. And so I think, I take it that's a matter for discussion and debate.
It will be.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. You can call you.
Yeah, the only thing that I've been advocating was a total sale of the property minus the marina. See if they're interested in, you know, figure out how much you would, you know, sale would be and ask them if they wanna buy it. That gets us out of it and they, they'll just be paying us taxes for that money, gets us out of it. So then gives us a, you know, a good piece of change for whatever it's worth. And we'd just be out of that business, we'd never have to worry about it again.
Marcus, you want in?
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm in favor of selling it. That's, that's something we discussed. My big concern is, whatever they put in there, it brings new money in, it doesn't dilute what's already downtown, what's already been spent in our city. I want a reason, and I don't know what that is, for people just Big Suffolk, Virginia Beach, whatever, to say, let's go to Norfolk tonight.
Great question.
That's, you know, we've got a lot of people that sweat blood down Grand Street, built up restaurants and businesses, what have you. We don't wanna dilute what they've got. I want another, you know, I want an attraction, I guess. How they do that, they're the pros, I'm not. That's my big concern.
Let me just say one thing, you know, I've heard the concern about diluting Grand Street. But what comes to my mind is Collie Avenue, 21st and 22nd Street already diluting Grand Street.
Well, some thought, I mean, I'm not sure, some thought that it helps, but, you know.
That's what our consultant said.
Said what?
That it would help, you know, that it would bring new, new people in and then they would go to the Granby Street place.
But the big point is getting new, new people down, however that work.
I don't know that we had a consultant say that. I think he did a survey in downtown.
No, the consultants that he has to look at both Cornish and to look at the other one, felt that it was not gonna be.
Okay.
They'll be on the fifth also. Their concept is that market share, and we would capture a bigger piece of market share. But again, Dana will be here on the 5th.
I think Andy is, is pretty much roached on, but I mean, my concern is our liability that if this doesn't work, and if businesses fail or if this fails, you know, just to clarify that for me. And then, I, I don't think the city should be in the business of deciding necessarily what this looks like. But I don't know if we wanna just give up all responsibility to them about what type of restaurants they're choosing. I'm very concerned about not having some local businesses and, and not just looking like another town center.
Marcus, and Anthony, I know you've got a lot of stuff, but included in this, and Bernard, I guess I'm talking to you, but of any, of any discussion we have or deal we strike with them would be a land disposition, which would set forth certain parameters in it that would address just what you talked about. And they would all be, you know, I mean, the size, the scope, the look, I mean, you can tighten that stuff pretty well down and still give them enough room to, you know, to be entrepreneurs. We were able to do that years ago, we actually at, you know, with the MacArthur Center, some things. We required certain first-class, what was considered a first-class facility. We were able to reference other facilities around the country that we expected this to look like, that we had certain benchmarks. It can get pretty sophisticated about what you want. So it's, I mean, we'll have to keep our eyes wide open to make sure we get the highest quality.
That's kind of like what I'd like to know, what you would, would recommend that we have those types of.
Yes, we have those standards. Like, over, over at the MacArthur Center, they couldn't go down there, for instance, and get a, you know, I don't know, like a Dollar Tree and put it up as a, as a, as a third pad or something like that. There were only certain stores that we would permit to go on a third pad, and that's pretty well decided, so. All right, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Just two things. One thing, just to piggyback on what you just said, I know that they would go through a process with the community. So the community would drive it. And they were very explicitly saying that, that the community will drive. They would come in and have these conversations with the community in terms of what they wanna see. And they thought it was very important to have the local flavor. So they would piggyback on those things that are important to this community as well as to the region. So that would be a part of that process that they would go through. They wouldn't just come in and say, we wanna bring this, 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 this. There's an orientation that they go through, again, just like we went through with the surveys and meeting. And so that, that's the piece that I, that gave me some comfort, because they were gonna embrace the community, not just come in here and decide what's gonna be what they thought was good. You know, again, at the end of the day, they wanted it to work. But my question is, has nothing to do with that. You heard me talk about that all day long. But my question is, you know, we talked about, me and the mayor, we talked about this some time ago, about Granby Street. And we keep talking about, how do we reinvigorate Granby Street? And, you know, I know we have the, the, what is it called?
Urban Outfitters.
Urban Outfitters is coming. But we have to do something to the streetscape of Granby Street. And we've talked about, we need to create, Granby Street needs to be a destination. We talked about the lights on every lamppost. You know, you go down there at night and you've got some trees lit up, some trees not lit up, some of the, the treatments around the trees are done, some are not done. There's no consistency. And so in order to, you know, for Granby Street to come alive, it needs to be a destination. So it would be nice, I don't know why or what, what impediment, you know, stopping us from putting the lights on the trees that would at least give it a destination where people come downtown, they say, wow, okay, it's well-lit, it looks good, you know? And then people start to kinda filtering, you know, in and around Granby Street to see what's there. But, you know, we have to make some effort. It's just not gonna do it by itself. And the people that own restaurants there have made the significant investment. But again, I think that we have a part to do in that, in terms of making it a destination. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Anthony.
Yeah.
Anthony's short his talk.
I must have a sore throat.
Trying to move the Angelo.
I just wanna make sure that it is, you know, it's an attractive place, it's an attraction that doesn't doubt, you know, that actually, I'm a bar leader, it attracts new people, it brings in new money, people who would not ordinarily come here. I think the parking after 6:00 or 7:00 or whatever time, free parking, I think that's a great idea. Some of the financial, I see Daryl over there having a fit, I see his head moving, but.
Just keep it to one garage that's right across the street.
Right. It is an attract, to have free parking somewhere.
Right.
Near Waterside is, is attractive. It is attractive, you know? I mean, in town center, it's free all day, all night, whenever you wanna go.
They don't have light rail.
Yeah, well, that's true. And that's, that's true too. But I mean, after 6:00 or 7:00 or whatever the time is, or maybe if it's not free, maybe, you know, a dollar, $2, I mean, just some flat fee.
On the way coming in.
Right, that you know what you're gonna pay and, and, you know, and that's it. But whatever it is, I just want it to be profitable to the city. I want the citizens, have said they want to remain family-friendly. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the citizens have also said that they wanted us to maintain some kind of control over it. So I'm not in favor of selling it. I think that would be a short-term fix with short-term money. I think that if they're going to invest 28, 29 million dollars, they have skin in that game, that they are going to want to see a return on their investment. And I don't think, I could be wrong, but I just don't think they're gonna let it flop with 28, 29 million dollars invested in that, in that property. So, that's, that's my two cents.
I agree with what everybody said. I wanna, I mean, gosh, by the time it gets to me, you know, I wanna add on to the parking situation. I think that that is a detriment for, for people to go downtown and use Waterside. I think you could even add in, if you purchase a meal at one of the restaurants, that you get your parking validated. That way you can, you know, somehow tell the difference between somebody who's going down there for something else and, you know, maybe like we do at the movie theater, it's reduced down to 50 cents at MacArthur if you, you know, go to the movie. But something like that, that's an incentive, because I think that that's one of the attractive things to the restaurants down in town center in Virginia Beach. Also, I would like to see how we connect this to Harbor Park, and how do you get people to walk from the light rail station at Harbor Park to Waterside? And that they could feel safe walking from there because, or even from the, this light rail station right outside here? How do you connect light rail to Waterside? Whether it's a pathway that specifically leads people from there to Waterside that's lit up or better landscaped?
The MacArthur Center station has a direction line to Waterside.
Right. Well, I don't know whichever one's closer, but finding a way to make it connect that way. And also, I think somehow tying the cruise terminal into this, you know, when people come into town, you know, one of the big things we've talked about is that parking for the cruise terminal is at Cedar Grove. Maybe there should be some designated parking at this parking garage for cruise terminal parking, so that when they park their cars, they can go spend some dollars at Waterside before they go on the cruise. And, you know, something connected to that, but we have to make it work that way as well. And the more that you do that, the more popular it gets, more people start talking about it and creates a better environment. But I, I like the marina stuff. We, I think we've gotta find a way to hook that in. I think we get bypassed from talking to some boaters. We get bypassed quite a bit because we don't have anything to offer. And how do we get them to just go down here and spend one night here and spend money and provide showers if that's what they want, or if there's, you know, other shops?
That has to be understood as a destination for them.
Yeah.
Because they blow right past us.
Right, yeah. I think even Hampton might be getting more of that than we are.
I mean, we haven't invested in that marina. I can't remember the last time we put, where is Stanley? Stanley was gonna fix it years ago and even he retired.
We put in some showers and washing in the Waterside itself for them. We also redid all the boards and everything, redid the lighting.
All right, Tom.
That's it.
Marcus, just a couple of things. I know, I think it's all been well said. There's about a $4 million note on the property. I would expect them to, you know, to relinquish, to extinguish that note. I would expect that the lights will be on during the daylight as well as, I mean, it has to be attractive to families, there has to be things going on in there during the day, especially for people to come and stay in our hotels or on the conference center that we've talked about. I mean, it has to be a complement to what's going on in downtown, not just be seen, you know, sort of out on an island out there. Because there was a point with Waterside, when we started the second makeover of Waterside, it just sort of became a, it didn't work with anything else. And I don't know how you do that exactly, but I mean, it needs to work. I mean, Anthony mentioned Granby Street, but I think it also needs to work with our hotels. Somebody proposed having some space in there that people could rent out, small, I mean, groups of 50 or 60 people, like for banquets or something. I think that would be, and I'm gonna get into conference center business over there, but something like that I think would be a great amenity. Eric, if somebody was staying in a hotel, that they could go across the street, you know, use some of that space and, you know, look out on the water and, you know, maybe somebody, you know, just bring everybody who's in a conference up there or something. It can be, it can be a complement to what we want to do. But I, the public realm, how the public walks around the space, how they enter the space, how, I mean, I think that's really important, that we don't over, overdevelop the site. And I think, I've said this before, I think this might be one instance where we sort of underpromise the community and over-deliver. I mean, Anthony, Andy started off with three or four restaurants. It's much easier to build those things if they're successful than it is to start out with a dozen or 13 and then start trying to back it down when it's not. We did that with the old Waterside, it started off full, little by little, it just emptied out. I think in the original proposal, they were talking about opening up the middle of Waterside. I think that would be really a great idea. I mean, I wouldn't be offended if they wanted to take down part of Waterside, like the addition that was put on many, many years ago. And, you know, just create some more open space out there, or maybe another small amphitheque or something where people could gather or, I mean, I think if they really, and plus they can get enough critical mass to make the thing work, which, I mean, I wanna make sure that they, I'm not trying to send a message that it shouldn't, there has to be a certain critical mass for them to make the numbers work.
Right.
And I don't wanna, you know, tell them how to do that, because that's in their business. But at the same time, I wanna be very careful that it's, that everybody feels like they're welcome there at the same time, night and day.
Are they open, or do we know? Are they open to, I had to step out, but I heard you talking about like a small Whole Foods or Produce shop, or maybe a Chocolateer, like maybe a Fugiva, or a Brookstone, or something like that, that is not just the restaurants, but if you have people staying at the Marietta, you have them staying at the Sheridan, they're gonna come over for something special. We've got some of the little specialty stores, I think, that are still there that do the Virginia featured kind of items. And, I mean, just something that you may not find everywhere.
Sure, that's, that's not what they do. It's an entertainment venue.
But I think they do need to be marina-sensitive, and they need to understand that business, Anthony.
Well, they, they do, but I knew that we had a RFP on the street and so.
Yeah, I understand, I didn't know we did.
And we, yeah, so I.
They wanna be hand-in-hand with the RFP on the street. But see, the RFP on the street may be the marina itself, but they need to have something within there that, that the boating community would be, would want to make their destination.
Exactly.
But going back, if we could, Paul, back to the lease issues, you know, and Bernard, you know, I'm gonna really focus on you on this. You know, on a commercial lease, the.
You know, on a commercial lease, the landlord shifts the majority of the responsibility to the tenant. And I really do believe that that, even though we own the property, or the city, and an entity does, that the upkeep, maintenance, those, you're not writing these down.
You haven't asked a question yet.
I'm letting him know, but he needs to write it down.
Bernard's not writing it down.
Nobody's writing it down.
It's recorded.
I just want to make sure that it's understood. I just want it to get understood that, that when we're negotiating this lease, that, you know, a commercial lease, they're going to assume that responsibility. We're not coming in and putting in new air conditions. I mean, that's not our, it's not how it works. We're not going to maintain, do the maintenance that we've done in the past, perhaps. You know, it needs to be understood, you know, it's a commercial lease, and that with a commercial lease comes their responsibility as a tenant, because they're making the money to be there. And, and so, and I also would like, Bernard, if it's possible, and Marcus, write this down, that we get, if we haven't gotten it yet, I'm curious if you can find for us their leases that they have at their other properties. Have they been, are they producing, oftentimes, a company like this comes in and they may bring their own lease and say, "This is what our lease, and this is what we want." The real question is, is what are the other cities' municipalities producing? Are they producing a lease? And what are they? Contact Kansas City, see what their lease is, if they can, if they can send it to us without a confidentiality.
They built Kansas City.
Kansas City is what it is.
Maybe, then let's go Philly or wherever else they are. Let's go to the ones that haven't built that.
We're asking them to send a copy of their general lease to us. They can send us that.
I think that, but I, I do want, I'm curious what other municipalities are doing with them. And even if they're not doing it with Quorish, and let's check to see what they're doing with other similar companies, to see what they're pulling out. Are they, and I'm also curious if they're phasing in their, how are they handling their escalations? What are the escalations that are normally done in these types of leases? I'm curious as to that. Again, looking at the interior, you know, is it a 2%, 3%, 5%? What are the escalations? And over what term are the escalations? Is there an out, if it's a 50-year lease, I've heard rumors of those being thrown out, 25-year lease, is there an out earlier if it's not working? So I'm curious about that, again, looking at the lease terms. I'm sorry, but...
I would just say that, I was just going to say that, you know, they're in Baltimore, you know, with the...
Inner Harbor.
Right, so they, they, they know how to respond to the boating community there.
Yeah, that would be true.
Right, so, but the piece I would, I would be more concerned about, you know, we were talking about parking. I don't think we give up parking. That's just me. I just think that, you know, we start attracting people here, you're an urban city, I don't care, within any major metropolitan city you go to, you pay for parking. We're not suburbia of Virginia Beach, we're north. And so, and so I just think that we want to maximize this opportunity to make the load lesser on our citizens of this city. And so if that, now, we have, after, after, on weekends and special events, we have special events parking, that's $5, you know, is what they charge in every garage, you know? So it's, it's consistent across the board. But the other part of that equation is, we want people to get outside there, sometimes it's $3, but we want people to get outside their cars and use the light rail to come into the city. So it's twofold. We want people, we want traffic, we want foot traffic. You know, so I don't, I just don't think we give up that parking. That's a, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to drive revenues up in the city. And so that's a way that we, that's a piece that we keep. So if they go in a place and buy one beer, but they pay $5, we got $5.
Can you just also give us an update on the leases that are presently held there? Because I know they said they would honor those, and I just was curious what those were, how long, and how they...
They said they would keep all the places that...
I know, I just want to know which ones they have.
Tony, my question is about procedures, process from this point forward, because we have, we've seen a concept from them, you know, pretty drawings and some, you know, with the recommendations or conversations that we have next Tuesday, they go back to the drawing board, I guess, and come back with an, where do we go from here? What are the steps? I know there was a perception, I guess, from an article that ran today, that people are trying to upset that this isn't happening fast enough, but I think generally, we all want this to be done right. It's not that we, but I'm just, I don't understand where we're going with this from this point forward, because they're going to come in next Tuesday or the following Tuesday and have another presentation. Are they going to show us what we've already seen? Or are they going to take comments that are from today and now try to implement that in another presentation to us?
I just go answer your questions.
I would, yeah, I would hope they would be responsive to what the manager puts down, after you refine some of our ramblings here on that, what we think are important.
Right, okay, I mean, and so are we...
They'll come in and make a presentation, and we'll be able to ask questions, we'll be able to make comments, like this is what we would like to see.
Okay.
And I think that'll go on for a couple of hours. At some point, we'll then have to look at the manager and say, "This is what we want you to deliver." And, you know, and then we'll have, obviously, need to have, you know, a closed session and talk about terms and things like that would be, he'll start to negotiate something. If we can make it work, we'll make it work. So, but it's probably two or three steps.
Is he putting a timeline on the negotiations after that? Are you 30 days of negotiation? What are you, whatever's the... Okay. That's us?
Well, I don't know, 30 days is pretty tight.
Yeah, I was going to say... That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I was going to say, it does sound really tight. Bernard, I mean, what do you think, to close a deal like this?
Right, I would start off with a letter of intent with all of the terms, and so we knew we had agreement in principle, and then we can move to the details of the lease, which will include the design review, have your approval, the design review commission, and not expect them to invest in design until after we have an agreement with them. And they impressed me as being ready to go, and I think we're ready to go. But I don't think there's any reason to put a time limit on it. I mean, if we're working along and succeeding and done quickly, great. But if we're working along and there's progress, I don't see why we would ever stop it.
Well, I think we have a legal obligation to enter into this in good faith and to do a due diligence, it's appropriate. You know, you don't want to say, "We're going to do it in 30 days, and we can't wrap it up that fast."
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. It's got to be...
They just think we'll take months.
Right. It seems like just by some complaints, that this was something that was going to be done in 30 days.
No.
And I don't want the public to think that this is something that's going to be done next month.
We may get to the end of the line and say, you know, we can't do it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Terry has one question.
I just have one quick thing. Brett was good about telling us what our schedule is for school board nominations. So the nominations have to be in by when, the 12th?
June 12.
I just am curious, how are we blasting this out to civic leagues and people to know about this? Because, you know, it's not enough to just have a little square in the compass that says we're accepting that. Do we have, you know, we've been doing better.
We can...
What's the plan?
I'm going to take some TV time while we're up here getting it out.
No, we can make, we'll go the extra mile.
Because we're missing part of the civic league cycle already, because, you know, the groups had met on the third week.
But this is the schedule, this happens every year to us.
And every year...
Quick women, can we ask for it last year?
Okay, we'll get back to that. I want to go into closed session, just very briefly with the council, to talk to you all real quickly about something. Marcus, don't worry.
I'm going to recommend Marcus talk to you, not you.
Everybody could hustle, we have something to do.
Marcus, don't, don't fire me.
We hear what this is about.
I'm ripe to bananas.
The American Council Assembly closed meeting on May 22, 2012.